Yes, sure.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled Apex Town Council Meeting for December 18th, 2018. It is also the last scheduled meeting for the calendar year. I want to start out by wishing everybody a happy holidays coming up. And at this time, I'd like to recognize for our invocation Rabbi Kotler from the Kabad in Cary. You might recognize him from the menorah and the shemash lighting that we did the other weekend. Rabbi Kotler, please, if you would, bring our invocation.
Thank you. Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the town council of our great town of Apex. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our town with the blessings of good health and prosperity. Grant these public servants wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so they should always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. May they have the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform challenges we face today into the seeds from which we'll sprout the growth of tomorrow. The entire world looks upon the United States, a nation founded upon principles of morality, decency, and trust in God, a country where each and every one of us can lift our heads and be proud of our roots and identity, a country where all faiths alike can work together to permeate goodness and morality in our society. These are the ideals that make us the role models of the world. And may our town serve as a beacon of light for people from all faiths and walks of life. May Apex help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance so that America is truly one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And let us say, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And before we go to our pledge, I would just like to recognize, first of all, he brought his daughter Rivna so she could experience a little bit of town council, and that Rabbi Kotler made, carved out a little bit of his time. He's just recently had a baby since we did the menorah lighting. So just wanted to congratulate him on his newest addition to his family, Shalom. That is his name. So with that, I'd like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentation, so we will jump right into consent agenda. This is the time where we look at items that we typically enact with a single motion because they are considered non-controversial. If any council member wishes to pull one for later discussion, they certainly may do so. So at this time, I'll ask what the wish is of the council. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and seconds to approve. Any discussion?
Mayor, I believe this is the shortest consent agenda we've had in some time, so...
It's great. Well, let's vote quickly so we can make it consistent.
Did you want to add to it?
No, thank you.
Actually, but to clarify, the minutes from the last meeting, are we kind of two beats behind normally? Because I thought we were meeting, we normally...
No, we're usually caught up.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Okay.
Not this time. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If there's any discussion on the consent agenda motion to pass, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, so the consent agenda is passed. We now move to setting the regular agenda. I know of no items that need to be added or deleted or moved, so I'll turn to the town manager and the town attorney to see if they have anything.
No, sir.
All right, we're not hearing anything. I'll ask council if there's a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, the agenda is set. We now move to public forum. This is a time where you get to speak to us. We listen to you for up to three minutes. If you have a topic that you wish to speak to us about, hopefully you've had a chance to sign in on the yellow sheet, which also is the place for public hearings. If you need to speak tonight, you need it to be signed in. The clerk will bring me that sheet now. This is the time where we listen to the citizens and your voice. We take notes. It's not a dialogue, so we often do not discuss, but we do take under advisement, and sometimes we let our town manager run with things. At this time, I see there's one person signed, so I'll open up the public forum and call up Daniel McMains.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Dan McMains. I'm a resident of North, Apex here for over 40 years. My family was born in, been here since the 70s. And I'm also the owner of J&amp;D Tree Pros Incorporated. And I'm here because of my property over by my parents' house on Jinx Road that I've owned since the early 2000s. And my company has been in business since 1996. We have been either running the business out of my parents' house on Jinx Road or in different areas that we kept trucks stationed. And I own some property on Old Ivy Road. The actual physical address is 1524 Old Ivy and 17...
Whenie?
Seventy-six, twenty, McQueen Drive. Recently, I got a NOV, a notice of violation, about some things there in the mulch equipment, about things that we have. There was apparently a sewer spill in the neighborhood adjacent to me. So the problem is, is that there was a mulch pile there and there was a coli. And everything the state came and asked me to do with this mulch pile, that I also have a note where I allowed the developer to build the actual berm on my property, and it was on his property as well. That since, I've spent almost $30,000 to have moved to what the state told me was fine for us to do. Since then, I had, I've already bought property, a commercial piece of property. I bought it over a year ago, and knowing that this was going to be coming, and we were planning on moving the company. I had a letter written from our architect, Perry Cox, a local architect, and Trent is our civil engineer from here in town, to move our company. And I got that letter to Cliff Joyner, which was, I believe, was supposed to go to Diane King. And him and I had some conversations over the phone. I get a NOV in the mail. And now I'm currently being fined, it looks like $2,400 a month, in addition to me spending almost $30,000 to do what the state had asked, although half this was on the developer's property. Our company is trying to move. It just takes time to get all the civil engineering, all the reports done. I'm trying to do it by the book, dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's. And our company employs, almost 25 employees, and this is a very stressful thing for us to have on our company. And I just think that as a local man that has been brought into an ETJ, that I've been doing business there before I was actually brought into that, I just think this is unfair to the residents of Apex and to a small business owner such as myself. So I just would like evidence to be seen of that, and let's figure out a way to help other residences and small businesses here in Apex. So I just wanted to bring that before you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McMains. And I'll just redirect this to the town manager and assistant town manager so they can look. And as I understand, the town has moved towards him, so he found himself in non-compliance...
That's correct.
...by just being existing the way he was. So maybe we can find a good way to handle that.
We'll examine all the facts of the case.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. McMains. No, I'm sorry, that's all. I was just going to carry on business. That's the last of the public hearings, so I'll close now the public forum and move on into the next item on the agenda. I appreciate you coming out, Mr. McMains. We now move to public hearing number one. This is a possible motion for rezoning application 18CZ31, and presenting this tonight is Shelley Mayo.
Good evening, everybody. Oops. So this is a rezoning amendment to the Westford PUD. Westford PUD is located approximately here. It's just north of US 64, bounded by 64 on the south and Jinx Road along the north. This just gives you an aerial of the site. The project's currently zoned PUDCZ. This is an amendment to that PUD, so it will still be zoned PUDCZ after this. And it is in compliance with the 2030 land use map. The site consists of approximately six parcels totaling about 98.5 acres. In 2017, the Westford Apartments and towns at Westford subdivision were both approved. A portion of the property located closest to the intersection of Jinx Road and 64 is planned to be non-residential. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on September 27th. That meeting report is attached to your staff report. The applicant is actually proposing changes to their PUD in order to allow for larger signs along 64. When Westford was originally approved in 2013, an option did not exist to allow the developer to submit a customized master sign plan with the PUD that deviated from the standards in the UDO. The UDO was amended in 2017 to allow that. You recently saw Sweetwater's PUD amendment come through about a couple months ago for a very similar reason. The current language in the Westford PUD states that "all signage within the development shall comply with the signage requirements as set forth in Section 8.7 Signs of the Town of Apex Unified Development Ordinance." The applicant is proposing three changes. These are on the screen in front of you. First is that UDO Section 8.7A allows for one principal ground sign per entrance. The owner's requesting two principal ground signs at the Acton Street entrance off of US 64 West. Just to give you an idea, this is the construction that's part of the Acton Street entrance. So it would be right here off of that entrance there.
At one entrance?
Two at one entrance.
One on straddling?
One on either side.
Presumably.
Mm-hmm. Acton Streets are right-in, right-out entrances, providing access to both residential and commercial uses. Within the Westford PUD, the two principal ground signs will provide visibility to both eastbound and westbound traffic along US 64. And each sign will have a maximum sign area of about 32 square feet. The UDO currently only allows for a maximum sign height of six feet. The owner is requesting that the maximum sign height for this PUD be 12 feet to allow the actual sign panel to be a part of the main entrance feature. All other signage within the development will meet the requirements of the UDO. This is just a rendering of what they've proposed for their sign, one on each side of the Acton Street entrance. The proposed PUD is consistent with the transportation plan and with all other Town of Apex plans. The planning board reviewed this proposal last week and unanimously recommended approval, and planning staff also recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here as well.
So I see that sign is for illustrative purposes only. Is that, I mean, kind of a similar of what it's going to look like? Maybe not exactly, but...
To the best of my knowledge, this is pretty much exactly what it will look like. The reason that we put for illustrative purposes only is if they decide in, say, eight years to redo their sign, and they just want to make it look a little bit different. If, since this is part of their application package, they wouldn't be able to do that unless it had that phrasing on there. So it'll still meet all those other requirements that are in here and in the ordinance, even if they have to do that. And we didn't want to make them have to come back for another rezoning if they wanted to change the overall, the general look of the sign. But my understanding is this is what they intend to build at the moment.
I have a question. So the signs on this, are they both going to be on the, on one side of 64?
They will be. They'll just be on the north side of 64. Actually, I could have gone down. So this is the Acton Street entrance. There'll be one here roughly and one here. This is the portion of the property that's planned to be non-residential. This is currently apartments, and this has been approved as townhomes. So it's just to have one here and one here. They're a little bit taller. The topography of this actually drops pretty dramatically from 64. It's kind of a nice hole down there. So in order to actually get any visibility, both because people are driving at 55, 65, 75 miles an hour along 64, and because it's a little on the low side, they wouldn't get much visibility if they didn't request these larger sizes.
Can you give the background of that, the 2017 UDO change? Like, was that initiated by a different development or by staff or by one of us?
I'll actually defer to Amanda. She's more knowledgeable about that than I am.
So there was a quest by, a request by a different development to amend the sign standards more than what the UDO at the time would allow and have some flexibility, given the context of that particular PUD. And so staff agreed that the sign standards, it may be appropriate to amend those, given the context of each particular area, and that that sign, those sign standards should be part of the PUD. So that's why the UDO amendment was changed to allow this type of plan to come forward.
And at that time, did you guys compare, like, the sign ordinances in nearby neighborhoods to kind of see what they're doing, to see how similar or different Apex is?
Yes. And then when different proposals come in, as each proposal comes in, we evaluate that based on other communities, our own ordinance, because we don't want it to vary too drastically from our own standards, and then the location of the signs and the context of the area, and factor all that in to whether we can recommend approval of the request or not.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here and wish to speak?
He's here.
All right.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Peter Knossen, Jones Knossen Engineering, 221 North Salem Street. Thank you, Shelley, for that presentation. Just to give you just the dimensions, it's about the signs themselves sit about 100 feet off of the westbound lane of 64 and over 200 feet from the eastbound lane. So given that, given that length of distance, rather, from travel lanes where you have high speed on 64, we believe that a larger sign is warranted. And it is a, an attractive sign, and they put a lot of effort in it. And what was shown, even though it says illustrative, that is the sign that will be built. So I'm here to answer any questions and...
All right. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Knossen.
Thank you.
All right, this time I'll open the public hearing, and seeing that the only person who signed up was Mr. Knossen, I will also close the public hearing. Refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion approval, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We now move to public hearing number two. Public hearing number two is also a rezoning application 18CZ29 for the courtyards at Holt, courtyards on Holt, PUD, and presenting this tonight is Amanda Bunce.
Good evening. Okay, so getting a little assistance from Marty here. See. There we go. All right, so this is a rezoning 18CZ29. This property is located on Holt Road, west, south side of Holt Road. There's our general vicinity maps. This is in the northern part of our jurisdiction, as you can see. The properties contain single-family dwellings and a pond centrally located, as well as some vegetation. The surrounding zoning is primarily rural residential, as is the subject property. Property to the south is planning a development conditional zoning. That's the Middleton subdivision. And then you have some jurisdiction in Wake County in this vicinity, and then Cary's jurisdiction is to the north. The proposed zoning is planning unit development conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map designates this property as medium-density residential, and the proposed rezoning is consistent with that land use map classification. The applicant conducted their neighborhood meeting on August 22nd, and you have that neighborhood meeting report. The applicant is proposing a development that allows single-family accessory apartments, greenway, recreation facility, private, parts, active and passive, and utility minor. Additionally, the residential dwellings within this community shall consist exclusively of age-restricted units in accordance with the Federal Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995, which means that basically 80% of the dwellings have to be occupied by at least one person that is 55 or older. The dimensional standards, so the density that is proposed for this development is 3.3 dwelling units an acre or 94 units. This is well below the maximum of six dwelling units an acre that is supported by the medium-density land use classification. The minimum lot width proposed is 50 feet with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet proposed and a maximum building height of 40 feet. The minimum building setbacks are consistent with other residential development standards. For buffers, generally speaking, the PUD meets or exceeds the buffer requirements of the UDO with one exception, and I'll review that one last. So along Holt Road, the UDO requires a 30-foot type B buffer, and they've increased that opacity to a type A. Along the...
I'm sorry, is that undisturbed A?
That is an undisturbed A, yes. If that buffer is disturbed, the width goes up to 50 feet per the UDO standards. So along the southern property boundary, we have a 10-foot type B buffer, as is required by the UDO. Along the west, the buffer width has been increased from a 30-foot, excuse me, from a 20-foot type B buffer to a 30-foot type B buffer. Now, along the Grimley property, this is where the buffer is proposed to be reduced from what the UDO requires. The PUD standards do allow for a buffer reduction. This portion of the Grimley property is likely only to develop if incorporated as part of the courtyard's property. It's south of the stream, and there's really no other place for it to get access to a roadway. This portion of the Grimley property has a single-family structure on it, but hasn't been used for single families sometime, and there's various things stored on the property. So staff agree that it was appropriate to reduce the buffer width there as well. The, I'm going to get ahead of myself. Architectural standards that are proposed for this development are fairly consistent with what we typically see for single-family development. I'll point out some differences. All residential dwellings shall contain a master bedroom on the first floor. The front facade of any front-loaded garage shall not protrude farther than one foot forward of the front facade or the front porch, whichever is closer to the right-of-way. And in order to facilitate the age-restricted community, homes constructed on the property are proposed to include monolithic slab foundations. The Parks and Rec Committee reviewed this at their November 28th meeting and recommended a fee in lieu of dedication for this project. For access, the full movement access is proposed on the northern side of the development to align with Monford Hall Court in the subdivision across Holt Road. An additional point of access, a right-in, right-out only, is proposed in the southeast corner of the property, also to Holt Road. There will be a connection to Gilwood Drive, which was a stub street provided by the Middleton subdivision, so that will be continued into this development. And then there will be stub streets provided at the, along the other adjacent properties to allow for extensions of roadways as those properties redevelop, if that does happen in the future.
Sorry to interrupt you. The stub streets are, they have to stop at that property line, right? They can't cross over?
That's correct. They generally stop at the property line or just shy within 10 feet of the property line. And that allows for that road to then be continued as the next property develops. The developer, the development will provide left-turn lanes on Holt Road at each of the access points, and provide right-of-way widening based on an 80-foot right-of-way along Holt Road in support of a three-lane thoroughfare cross-section. And there will be sidewalks on both sides of all streets internal to the development and sidewalk along the Holt Road frontage. A TIA was not required for this development because it did not meet the thresholds as set in the Unified Development Ordinance. The planning board held a public hearing on December 10th and unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. Staff recommends approval as well with the conditions offered by the applicant. Approval of the rezoning is reasonable because the proposed planning development conditional zoning district is consistent with the medium-density land use map classification and the zoning of adjacent properties to the north and south. It's in, it is also reasonable in public interest because it will allow development for single-family residential uses in a manner generally consistent with the surrounding properties. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on the rezoning.
So the, I was, I noticed there was a greenway easement, or a proposed greenway at the northern part. And so, and I read that this one, the fee in lieu may be used for that, or they may build that part of that. And so I guess, is there, is there plans? How do we get that connected to the rest of that greenway? And I guess that's not really necessarily part of that, but is there, do you guys advise them to build, actually build that, a small section of the greenway for future hope that it connects?
If it's currently on our plan, then yes. If it's not currently on our plan, then we can suggest connections. But in order for them to get credit for the fees that they owe, it has to be, I believe it has to be a greenway on our plan.
I believe it is.
And so there is language from the advisory commission recommendation evaluating greenway trail connections as adopted in the bike Apex and Parks Recreation Greenway and Open Space Master Plan at the time of master subdivision plan approval. And if recommended any public greenway that's designed and constructed to Town of Apex standards within a public greenway easement, will be able to obtain credit for construction against the required fee in lieu.
As to my questions, do you typically recommend them actually building a small section of it, or is it better to, like, wait until it's more connected and then...
If we can get it constructed with the development, then that's usually better.
Okay.
So...
One of the plots that I saw showed buffers along the little stream that's leaving that, that pond that's there. My question is, and, and buffers around the pond, they are keeping the pond, is that correct?
The pond is proposed to be drained.
Drained.
Yes. And so they will have to submit a pond drainage permit and then go through that process, await a period of time, I believe it's six months, to see where the stream reforms, and then the repairing buffers will be measured off of that stream.
Where's the dam? It looks like the dam is on the next neighboring property. I guess that's a detail that they'll have to work out.
I can go to the existing conditions page. The dam is on the subject property.
It is on the subject property.
Yes. The boundaries of the pond do extend a portion on the Grimley property.
Yeah.
But the actual dam itself is on the subject property.
And what's the, what's the procedure for, if they want to drain it? Besides, I guess permission obviously is required and some, how's that work out normally?
So they submit a pond drainage permit and plan to the town for review, and we look at the method by how they're going to drain it and where the water will be diverted to, and all the standards. That's mostly handled by our stormwater and sedimentation control staff. Planning does have some review. We ensure there's tree protection fencing and things of that nature.
If the resident, if the, not part of the development section refuses, or what happens then?
Well, this property owner has right over the dam. There could be a civil issue if this property owner doesn't like the fact that the waters would be leaving his property, but it's nothing that we can prohibit. So that's an issue between property owners.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for staff?
One final question. You mentioned slab-on-grade is what the construction is?
Yes.
How many steps are up off of the, to this, to the porch?
Um...
Are standard, or is it three steps up, or...
It would not be three steps up. Considering that this is an age-restricted development, then it would be more of a level-entry type home.
Okay. I mean, when I was in California, I lived in a slab-on-grade house, and hated to open the door because when the wind was blowing, it contributed, the front yard leads into my house. So I, I kind of cringe a little bit about slab-on-grade after that. Thank you.
Any others? All right, thanks. Ms. Bunce, is the applicant or representative of the applicant here?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Gosch, I presume?
That's correct.
Yeah, good to see you again.
And good evening, Mayor Olive and Mayor Protim Dozier. My name is Neil Gosch. I'm an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group at 112 West Main Street in Durham, and I'm representing EPCOM Communities tonight for this rezoning. I'll thank Amanda for her presentation. She was very thorough, covered a lot of the same points that I would have. So I'll try not to be repetitive. But for those of you who are unfamiliar with EPCOM, I thought it might be useful to give you a little background. you a little background. Epcun, they've been around for more than 30 years, and in that time, they've built over 33,000 homes. Every community they build is age-targeted, if not age-restricted. Their communities offer single-story living on efficient lots in a walkable format, which is friendly to our aging population. Epcun is committed to age-targeted housing because they recognize that this is an underserved segment of the population. Moreover, age-targeted communities have fewer external impacts than traditional single-family. The diminished impact on schools is obvious, but these communities also produce less traffic and are more environmentally friendly than their traditional counterparts. For example, on average, an Epcun home houses 1.7 people, so there is less trash produced, fewer miles are driven, and less energy is used per household. On that note, Epcun is happy in this community to commit to installing solar PV systems, each with a minimum capacity of 3 kilowatts, on at least five homes in the development. They plan to offer solar as an option for all homes and will commit to doing a minimum of five, but hopefully they can interest more people into incorporating solar panels onto their units. I know there was some discussion last month about the appropriate wording for these types of conditions, so I will attempt to offer a condition in that vein. We're happy to work with staff on the appropriate language, but for now, let's see if this works. A solar PV system shall be installed on at least five homes within the development at a minimum capacity of 3 kilowatts. All solar installation required by this condition shall be completed or under construction prior to the 95th, prior to 95% of the billing permits being issued for the development. We can discuss that now or later if, if appropriate, but in general, the, the idea is to do at least five homes with solar panels on it.
Well, can I chime in? We've also had several developments talk, talk about conduit on the homes that don't have the solar as part of insulation, and that wasn't in the, that wasn't in the PUD. I didn't notice it. So I was, I did a search on, I thought I did a search, and so, it's typically, yeah, we like to see like if they don't want, the next owner may want to put it in, so we often appreciate the pre-wiring of the houses as well.
Right. So, as I mentioned, this is an age-targeted community, and in the, all of the homes that Epcun has built, no one has requested the, the solar panels, but I think that speaks more to the demographic that buys these homes. In general, I mean, when you choose to install solar panels on your house, it is a financial matter, and it is a matter of payoff, and sometimes they can be too expensive for someone in this age span to actually see the benefit of it in their lifetime. They, Epcun is, they offer this as a option upfront with the construction, and at this time, I don't think they're inclined to offer to do the pre-wire conduit on every house, but I think I'm being...
No, we're okay.
Okay. They are okay with doing the pre-wire.
That's what I see, well, okay.
That was easy. Very good work.
You heard the voice of an angel.
There you go.
All right.
Um, where was I? Uh, so this community will feature vast sidewalk network to give pedestrians access throughout the neighborhood, including to the pool and clubhouse, the play lawn, and other common areas. There are, as you can see, there are seven planned points of access, which have been coordinated with the town's transportation staff or NCDOT and adjacent property owners in some cases. As staff mentioned, the approximate density for this project is 3.3 dwelling units per acre for a maximum of 94 total homes. Specifically, this project will be age-restricted as opposed to age-targeted, and the numerous architectural conditions included will help ensure that this site is developed with the high aesthetic quality that characterizes new development in Apex. We think this will be a great project for Apex, and we're not alone. The planning board recommended approval of this unanimously, so we hope you all agree, and respectfully, we would ask for your approval tonight. We have our team available here to answer any questions, if you have any, and I thank you for your time, and if we need to discuss that, the wording of that condition further, I am anticipating that we'll need to.
Okay. Well, let me first refer to Ms. Bunce and see if she wants worded clarification on the condition.
Sure.
Or if she wants to propose...
I would like to propose the official wording for the conduit condition. This is standardized language that we have been working with. All homes shall be, excuse me, all homes shall be pre-configured with conduit for a solar energy system.
Yeah, we're comfortable with that.
And then, for the previous condition, I believe that's consistent with language that we're, it's, it's close. I've run the math, 95% gets them at, at the five, you know, gets right up to basically the last five lots.
Yeah. But you're okay with the wording in terms of enforceability, or however you want to look at it?
Yeah.
Similar to our conversations from previous, okay, great.
Yes.
Very good. Thanks for the clarification, and I didn't hear, it sounds like you're okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it sounds like you're comfortable with the language we propose.
Yes.
All right. So now that we've got that resolved, let's see if council members have any questions for the applicant.
I do. So, we gave Mr. Jensen quite a few things he asked for, and so I'm going to do this again. I did speak to another representative on your team, and I had a few questions there, so I guess I can start with that. My questions were, were there going to be accessibility and mobility things within the home that would help people who had some issues with that? Were they going to be like in the kitchen, the bath, that sort of thing? Would those things going to become automatic in the homes, or would they have to be something added on as an extra?
So it's a, Epcun does age-restricted or age-targeted communities. Their homes are, I guess I would say, accessible-friendly, and I think maybe Jason can speak to some of the features that are already included in their homes, but the idea here is to accommodate, you know, our elderly population, which oftentimes has mobility needs.
All right. Just as you step up, one second, let me officially open the public, no, you don't have to leave. Let me officially open the public hearing so that you can introduce yourself, because I believe your name is on the list. So might as well just open the public hearing and bring you up. So if you'd like to answer the question, introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Feel free.
My name is Jason Coffey with Epcun Communities. Yeah, typically, we offer, I think from a standpoint, we have age-targeted, from a standpoint of expectations of all living on the first floor. We do have steps if people want bonus suites up, so it's not completely age-restricted from that perspective, but all those upgrades, people can order. So some people will say when they're moving in or want to give the inevitability, they can add those to the home as they go as well.
Okay.
But we don't set up front all that.
All right. So I appreciate the passive and active amenities I was told about, was a community garden, something that was discussed, just more things for, active for people there.
Yeah, we committed to a clubhouse and pool here. Again, this target audience, we have not gone into final details of any other amenities that may be here. We have offered gardens, we've offered some different things like pickleball and bocce ball and different community activities. We haven't gotten beyond just a clubhouse and pool at this location yet, but as we go through the process, we'll evaluate more and more.
Okay. And then I wanted to know, understand with this, with the Older Americans Act about the 90 days, so for example, if someone wanted to bring in their child who is obviously under 55, or a grandchild, or something happened in their family, and pretty much restriction is 90 days is, is the limit, and so are you willing to ensure that if things happen where people, there's some sort of, that gets way where people can take care of their family if they need to? Or if a caregiver needs to come in, otherwise, a caregiver could not live with someone in that community?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of what you're speaking to.
Okay.
In our communities, we don't restrict kids. Kids can be there. So it's just, it's just the age of the owner has to be 55 and above.
On 80%.
On 80%. The other 20% can be market rate. Now, I'll tell you, because of what we build, we don't have a varying of product, we don't have things that target non-55-plus buyers, so since we're age-target as well, we don't see tons of kids, but we don't have a restriction that says you can't have kids or grandparents either having their kids in or wherever that may be.
Right. And, and so, if the owner, well, there are homes where you, the age restriction doesn't apply, but in the ones where it does apply, as long as the owner is 55 or over, their kids can live with them regardless of their age.
Okay. And so here goes to, here goes my thing. So this is what I will, and this is what I want to know if you're willing to do for me. I want to understand, I want to see if there's a way in targeting a small amount of your development for older adults who have low incomes. So, in Apex right now, we know the average age is right at 35.9, and we're looking at, so for people who are over age 65, there are 11% who are in poverty in this area. So, I think what we're doing here is, is a lovely product, and the location and all is fine, but I think what we're doing is we're creating a great space for people who are aging or older. In a few years, I'd be able to move there, but it's still creating a space that we have now is still for older adults who have more means. And so, you know, I, I feel like the Ronnie DeJefield sometime up here trying to get, you know, what my passion is, and so we've got solar, we've got conduit, and so I just want to think about, is there a way to create a few homes for people who are aging, who have, you know, earned low incomes their whole life, and so in retirement, they'll have a low income, but they want to be in Apex, and their children and grandchildren are here as well.
And Councilwoman Dozier, I can appreciate your concern, and to be upfront, I am unaware of any age-restricted community that's been able to achieve that in the nation. It is very difficult, and this is a small project, in the range of things, this is at most 94 units, which aren't what I would call luxury units. So there's not a lot of room for, for the remainder of the development to subsidize affordable housing in this community, particularly with, you know, some of the other requirements and the environmental impacts in, in this site. The development costs on this site are already challenging, and I don't think that my client will be able to commit to providing that type of affordability in this community.
So what is the median income of the older adults that you think can afford the lowest price home in your community?
So, Epcun believes that the opening prices in this community would, would be in the 330s.
Okay. So that means these older adults would need to be making significant income. And right now, in Apex, our per capita is at 95, too, which is going up. It was 115 when I came on the council, and it went down to 91. Now it's back up to 95, and so I just concerned about that, and really want to push for people who are older, who had jobs, who just, you know, who worked hard, but their incomes are not going to be, even in retirement, they can't live in Apex. Or be able to like age-in-place in your town and move from a, a single-family home, you know, in a neighborhood to this neighborhood. So I'm just really concerned about that and how we do that, how we just get a few houses like you gave Mr. Jensen. That's all I'm asking.
I, I understand, and I definitely understand your concern, and I'm sorry that we can't accommodate it.
Me too. Yeah.
Could I make just a kind of a suggestion along this line?
Sure.
It'd be great if, if the builder, and I'm not saying this is a requirement at all, but the builder could, could work with Habitat for Humanity as a possibility, set aside a lot, and allow them to build the same exact house with their labor, and that would allow for somebody to come in that needs, that has lower income. It's just a suggestion. I, I think Habitat Humanity is around, and that might be a way to get lower-income housing without impacting the developer in terms of costs.
Yeah, I can, yeah, no, I will speak with the client about that.
If you do that, I'll volunteer. I volunteer on a house in Raleigh. I'll definitely volunteer in Apex.
We, let me try to respond a little bit to that. We kind of build what we build. We don't, we're not a builder that has a bunch of different product where we could do, to Neil's point, a large master plan community that would set aside units in different areas and have multiple floors or attached or multiple-floor units or things like that can, that can get to that point. A lot of our buyers, because the age, it's not usually an income-based, a lot of our buyers are cash buyers. They're selling their house, they live in Apex today, they're selling their home, they don't want to move away, they like where they live, but they don't need the big yard, the big house. So a lot of times, we're not into a lot of traditional mortgages that you think about a cash, you know, either a, an income-based, again, that's just, that's a different product than we do. Our, our communities very much are, if you go through our communities that we have here, you'll see the ages are 55s on the low end typically. Most of our buyers are probably from 60 to 75 are our buyers, and a lot of times, they're not looking at long-time, on-term mortgages, it's more of a cash opportunity. Or if it is, it's a shorter term or a smaller amount of the finance component of the, of that, of the home. So we typically do not get into that. Our buyers, again, we focus on the buyers that are here today. We feel we're, we're filling a need that this town has, but we can't fill every need, and that's maybe one of them that we're not able to get to that.
What did you say the average age is? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Of the buyer?
Our buyers typically range anywhere from 60 to 75 is the probably typical range of our buyers.
Right. So in Apex, for age 60 to 69, we have 6%, and in Apex, for ages 70 to 79, we have 2.5% of the population, and over 80 in Apex is 1.6%. They're your numbers of older adults in Apex right now?
In property, is that what this?
No, no, just in, in general. Uh-huh, I'm sorry. 11% is in property over age 65.
Can I hear about the Grimley property? So I live in a neighborhood in Apex that backs up to a property that's not part of the neighborhood, and I don't like it because there's no sidewalks that connect. It disconnects the neighborhood. So, and I, you showed there, it was shown that some of the developmental area in that property may be cut off. So, can I hear like, why is it not, why is it not part of this whole parcel and the story and?
Why is the Grimley piece not part of the project?
Yeah.
I mean, in simplest terms, because we have, could not agree on a price and haven't, don't have the Grimley's property under contract.
Okay.
And now, we have been speaking with them, and my understanding is, they, and I don't want to speak for the Grimleys, but I could speak on behalf of my client. We've been speaking with them, there's interest here, and the Grimleys also have expressed interest in having this property developed. One, one thing we did is we coordinated with them where this ought to come in to, to maximize development opportunity for this, for this property.
Okay.
The other thing to note is that on this property, there is a significant stream feature in here. This, this portion is cut off, but it's part of the Grimley property. I mean, so that is what it is. I don't know that it's developable anyway.
And there would be no stub road or anything that would connect?
Not, not to that piece, not to this piece right here. If it were developed, yes, it would, the only connection that could happen would be through the Epcun property. As far as, so, and as was mentioned, all of our streets internal have sidewalks, so the expectation is that when this property develops, a road will be built that also would have sidewalk. Our community, as you can see, goes all the way around the Grimley property, and internal to our site, we have that sidewalk network. So if you wanted to get, if you want to walk from this point on Holt Road to this point, you could do that internal to our neighborhood. Now, I recognize that going across Grimley's property would be faster, but we simply don't have it under contract, and if we do, if we do develop it, then yes, it would be incorporated.
So, and my house was built in 1999, and Apex is going to build the sidewalk eventually as part of the bridge project, but that's 20 years after, and that sidewalk gap is going to be there, I don't know how long, and that, that concerns me.
The sidewalk gap along?
Along Holt, yeah.
The Grimley property?
Yes. And I, they can, I can go around in my neighborhood internally, but it, it changes how people walk in my neighborhood because it's not connected. And I sent a, I sent an email, Jason Barr and your group, have you guys, would you guys consider building that sidewalk along Holt?
So, we've looked at this, I mean, like I said, we've been interested in, in this property to begin with. We've looked at it. The reality is that there is not enough right-of-way here to accommodate the construction of a sidewalk today. You would have to get additional easements because of the slope up here on, on Holt Road. And in good conscience, I cannot advise my client to commit to doing an off-site improvement that would actually require them to do additional, you know, get additional easements or right-of-way as the case may be. Aside from that, I mean, the point is, I don't know, if, if there was enough right-of-way, I don't know that my clients would be inclined to build it off-site. This is a rather large gap, and ultimately, this, this property will be developed, and when it's developed, that sidewalk will be built.
Right, but it could be 50 years from now, I guess.
I, I agree.
It could be 100 years from now, it could be tomorrow. It could be tomorrow, next year.
Right. I, I just don't know. I can tell you that I believe the Grimleys are actively marketing this property for development.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
I would also like to state a similar concern to Mayor Protem Dozier stated. We are losing affordable housing all over this county, and people can't afford to live in this area because of the housing prices just continually going up. And nobody's offering a solution that is, that can help gain those housings, that, that housing back. And, you know, there are, there are things that you can do. You can leave off garages. You can make the properties smaller. There are things that you can do to make it more affordable so that people with, of lower income can build in these, these areas, that can buy a house in these areas, making it one-story instead of two. These ideas can be implemented within these projects without it looking like it's just a low-income development. I don't know, I, I hesitate.
Yeah, and to speak to your point, I mean, some of the items you mentioned are exactly what Epcun does. They, they build on smaller lots and they are, they're all single, single-story. I mean, there's an option to build a bonus for those who do, but what they build is that first-floor living, like, like you mentioned.
Well, and I, I appreciate that because, you know, there are a lot of people, as they get older, they have more difficulty getting up steps and they like being on the first floor. I understand that. And, you know, I work with the elderly. That's what I do for a living. But we're still not addressing that huge issue of lower income. You know, $330,000 for a house is still unreachable for many people in retirement. So...
I understand.
Thank you, Niels. At this time, let me just see, we've got, two of the three have already spoken in public hearing. Mr. Roach, did you have something you'd like to speak in the public?
We have technical support.
Okay.
Engineering questions, I can help with.
All right.
Can I sign in?
All right.
Is it too late to sign off?
On public hearing number two, yes, I have, yes, it is. I have, everyone has spoken or advised that they have. So, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council, see if there's any discussion leading to a possible motion.
I'd just like to say that it's important for this council to consider all the things that, that we're asking of developers. All we're doing is driving up the end cost of the product that's on the market. Houses have no problem selling in Wade County. I, I'm guessing here, but I think the average house stays on the market probably 17 days in Wade County. So, I think it's, must be very affordable for a lot of people. We're, you know, I want to live on a 100-acre, you know, mansion, but it's, it's not my right to live there. The market will take care of itself. And the more we keep asking developers to develop a 610-foot sidewalk across a piece of property they don't even control, that's going to drive the cost up. Solar is going to drive the cost up.
I saw you look at me.
Yes, we're also driving out our teachers and our firefighters and our policemen and people who are retiring, who also would very much appreciate living very, very close. And I would appreciate them living closer.
What if they don't want to live close? I mean, there's lots of them.
They don't have to. I'm not saying they have to, but I am saying it would be nice if they had the option to live closer.
I mean, I don't know. I could have bought a house and named one of the new neighborhoods. It's really expensive, but I didn't. I chose to wait for the right house in the original neighborhood in Apex. I live in 1,800 square feet with six people. Why is everybody entitled to 3,000 square feet? I just don't understand.
Nobody's saying that.
I mean, you have a choice to live where you want to live. I think this is a great project. I think it's bringing something to the market that's needed. You know, this person that has lived on this property for a long time, I used to ride horses down this road when it was a dirt road. Probably fair to say before, a lot of people sitting up here are on this council. This is their retirement plan.
Is there a motion?
Well, I just want to say, it's my strong preference that this thing be developed with that property as a whole. That way, we get the sidewalk. That way, initiates traffic impact study because there'll be more than 100 houses. I think both those things and that part south of the, the waterway can be utilized potentially in a more cohesive development. So, I think doing this now, although it sounds like a lovely neighborhood, I think this chunk missing is going to be, it's going to affect the whole development, and it's going to affect the one that comes in after that, in the, on that same property. So, I have, I have concerns about that.
Okay, I've seen, so, I mean, I've seen projects that do this, and, yeah, I'm sympathetic to the situation you cited personally, because I know very, there's probably several dozen segments that are missing sidewalk chunks. And as we've, as we've seen, if the development comes along and fills them in, that's great, and we got what we wanted, and sometimes they come right on the heels. And other times, it may, it depending on what the economy does, it may take a while. We've also seen that if there are enough pedestrians using the sidewalks and then running into an end or a stub, there have been times where the town has taken it upon themselves to say, that's an important missing segment. Can we try to get the easement? Can we try to put in the sidewalk? And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do that in this case, but I know there are options. I'm sympathetic to the situation that if this were the property that I were trying to develop, or if it were my property, making off-site improvements on sidewalk for land that's not owned or parceled, I, I think is a difficult ask because we may or may not be able to convince, or I should say, the developer may or may not be able to acquire that property. We can always ask them to try and try again. And I think for, for cases where, for cases where we see that the assemblage of a property is, is absolutely critical to the success of the failure, I think it makes sense. And we've done that, Councilman Jensen. I, I know there are times where we've asked, can you please try to go back and get that parcel and then come back? And in those cases, they were a lot more critical to the success or failure of the implementation. In this case, while I'm sympathetic with the sidewalk problem, I know there are lots of other cases around, and they do get filled in eventually. And yet, it does change the pedestrian traffic pattern. I, I fail to see really any major problem with developing this, but as there is highly unlikely to be a tie, I won't be voting tonight. But I think this is a good project. I think it'd be great to see our age-targeted housing. I like that idea. I think there's not too much of it still. I think for every, you know, for, for the demographics that you cited, I think we've built enough homes to create the need or the imbalance in statistics to see that some one-floor master homes would be quickly snapped up. And I think that the market is looking for them. So, there, that's my thoughts on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. And I'll just add a clarification with the conditions that were cited and not just offered in the submission packet, but also offered tonight with the two that were read out.
Correct.
Okay. Same with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Before the vote, can I get a clarification?
Sure.
It seems to me that there, I mean, there's been some concerns raised, and I'm unclear on what the effect of this, if this motion were to fail, I'm unclear on what the effect of that would be. Would that mean that the item would effectively be denied? Would, would there be an opportunity to defer the case so that we can maybe address some of these things?
Right.
I know you've mentioned that this gap in the assemblage could, you know, potentially make. So, that, I'm just curious what the outcome would be.
Yep. So, I will be corrected if I'm wrong, but if you come back with a different proposal, it would go back through the same process as quickly as you could move it through the process with staff, correct?
It would have to be substantially different.
Right. Well, as opposed to saying, coming, coming straight back to council without going through planning board again. And without waiting 12 months to submit the same plan. That's the distinction I'm trying to make.
If, if we vote, depending on how the vote goes, can we then take a second vote to defer?
That's the question.
Wait, okay.
Well, and I think you also has an opportunity to, while you're standing here, to offer.
Right. So, I guess, let, let me be clear. Are you trying to find out if, if the, if it's denied? Because a motion to approve that fails is not necessarily a denial.
That's what I was asking.
Not necessarily, right? It can be interpreted as one, but it doesn't have to be if we can, want to further consider. So, in that case, I'll check with the town attorney, but I believe if a motion to pass does not, if a motion to approve does not pass, it does not necessarily mean that it is denied specifically. It can be inferred that way, obviously, but it doesn't necessarily mean. And we could take up another motion to continue it since it hasn't been specifically denied?
Yes, I believe we could, but I'm looking at that.
All right. All right, thanks. It, it sounds, it sounds a bit weedy, but I believe that would be how I would execute it.
And in that case, I, you know, I think we would certainly be amenable to defer rather than getting denied so that we can hopefully approach some.
Pursue the acquisition of a property.
We have a motion.
Hang on, hang on.
I know you've closed, but can I add one thing about, again, and Mr. Grimley's here, he may want to speak to it, but, but we, we've had several discussions with him regarding acquisition of the property. We have not been able to come to a point of agreement with price.
Yes.
And he has continued to discuss, I think, and he can speak if he wants to, or if he doesn't, he didn't have to, but he's talking with other people about potential development as well.
Okay.
So, for us to have our case, which we think is a very quality community development for Apex, something you need to be, I think, considered to be turned down because of an acquisition of a neighboring property, that just, that seems foreign to me. I mean, I, again, it seemed like an odd request when I hear people wanting, again, affordable housing, and then, hey, we got to go acquire maybe another piece of ground, we got to develop another piece of ground on someone that we have not been able to come to terms with. It, it just seemed like an oddity for me and, and we.
Okay, I'd like to interrupt you here, simply because if you were adding more specificity, then I was going to allow more. But at this point, you're advocating, so I want to pause you there if you don't mind, without malice. And so, at this time, I think, I think what I'm hearing is, and I'll check, but if we would like to vote on the, the motion to approve with all of the conditions stated, should that pass, you've got your pass. Should it fail, it does not, in my mind, necessarily mean that we can't also then ask for a, a continuance before we accept a motion for denial. And I'm just waiting to see if the town attorney has a comment on that.
Do we vote, Mayor?
Hang, I know, I know. Don't, don't worry, I know. We have not voted yet. We're still, we have a motion still on the table.
While we're waiting, though, I would like to suggest that solar installations actually reduce the cost of running the house.
That's.
I just thought I would throw that.
It's an operating reduction.
It's an operating reduction.
Right.
And for the right size solar, it's, it easily supports the financing for the solar.
Yes.
So, it could be, it could be that direction. I would like to say another thing, and I do understand about low-income housing, if you want to call it that, or assisted housing or whatever, not assisted. Maybe we need to have a program to try to help developers early on, or something like Habitat for Humanity in a development like this. But in reality, low-income housing is going to have to go into higher-density developments. That's, that's just a fact.
It will.
And, and we need to try to schedule, set those up. And as you well know, there's, there is one out by Apex Friendship School.
If I could, let me pause you now since that was a little bit of a filler.
It wasn't a full three minutes.
No, that was a pretty good filler. But let me check with the town attorney to see, did you come to a?
Yeah, I just wanted to make.
Legal conclusion or advice?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that specifically was addressed in the UDO.
Sure.
So, I've clarified that now.
Can I keep going?
No. If you don't mind, pardon.
I think it can be, I think you're correct, Mayor. It can be construed as a denial if there's nothing further, but it's not necessarily a denial. And so, you could then make a second motion to, for a continuance.
Bingo. All right, very good. I'm relieved that my interpretation was, was backed up. So, with that said, we have a motion in the second for approval with the conditions that were stated, including the ones that were in the packet and also added. And that was for the solar panels on five houses plus, and I'm paraphrasing, plus the conduit. So, if there's no further discussion on the motion to approve, then I'll call for the vote. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed say no.
No.
All right, I counted two in favor and three against. Does that sound consistent with everybody?
I'll make a motion to continue this.
All right, we have a motion and a second to.
When?
To continue to.
We'll have to pick a date.
January, do you need two weeks or four? Because it's the holidays. You want four? All right, so what, that January 20th? Fifth, oh, third, second, plus 14, 16?
That's the 15th.
Second, 15th? Oh, right, because second is the Thursday, right? So, the 15th. All right, so, continued until January 15th.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? All right, all in favor of continuing this item until January 15th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Okay, that passes 4-1. All right, that passes 4-1. So, this is continued to January 15th at the regularly scheduled meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for coming for that item, and I'll give you a minute to exit if you want, yeah. And if you plan to have a conversation, please close the door on your way out. Thanks. All right, thank you very much, and that moves us now to public hearing number three. Oh, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Bunce and let you introduce it.
Okay. This is Annexation 650 Sutton Point. It's located at 7429 and 7433 Roberts Road. So, it's up here just east of Green Level Church Road. And these are the two properties that are subject to the annexation. And as you can see, the corporate limits here, and this is in order for construction plans to be able to be signed. There's a non-residential development approved for this site, and they need annexation for water and sewer services. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions?
Do we have an, do we have an idea of what's going to go in there?
So, one of the buildings is a daycare, and then there are other buildings on the site that will be office uses generally. I don't know the exact users.
Okay.
All right, thank you. At this point, I don't think there's an applicant, right? Or at least wishing to speak. I don't see one. So, I'll open the public hearing. No one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and now move the matter to council for a possible motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously, and we now move to public hearing number four. And Ms. Bunce, I'll let you introduce this one also.
Okay. So, I have two UDO amendments for you tonight, and they are both at the request of the planning committee. The first amendment is to the sign section in order to prohibit temporary signs within town rights of way, abutting town-owned properties. town rights-of-way, abutting town-owned properties, and then the, and these apply to temporary signs only, these standards. And then there is an exception, that banners that hang above the street, which are in accordance with section 8.7, the sign section, would be permitted. You have any questions on this amendment?
What's the, I don't really understand where this is coming from.
Okay, so, the purpose would basically be to prevent, there'd be a lot of signage at different times of the year, or whatever the type, along town-owned properties, with, and where it's within town rights-of-way. The state has rules for what's allowed within their right-of-way, but for town-owned rights-of-way, this is the proposal to basically prohibit temporary signs adjacent to town-owned.
And the state obviously allows temporary signs in their rights-of-way.
Specifically political signs.
They don't allow other signs.
I'm not certain about that, but I do know that, that the state law is specific about political signs being permitted.
And why did we not want to mirror what the state has in place? Why did we not want to allow political signs, for example, in our rights-of-way? Because those are only what, for 30 days leading up to an election every other year?
Well, I'm not sure if the state law is specific about timing, and there are, the sign standards cannot be specific as to the, what the content of the sign. So, our sign ordinance is slowly evolving to remove all content-related standards from the ordinance as required after Supreme Court decision Reed versus Gilbert that was passed a couple, three years ago. So, we can't be overly specific about the types of signs where there is content related in order to know what type of sign it is. If you have to read it, it's content-related, if you have to read it to know what kind it is. So, this just simply prohibits all temporary signs, regardless of the type, within town rights-of-way, only adjacent to town-owned properties, so entrances to our parks, along town campus, fire stations, for example.
So, let me make sure I just understand. So, town, was it town rights-of-way, town land? Is that what, and abutting town property?
Yes, so it's only within town rights-of-way that abut town-owned property.
So, the land that belongs to the citizens, we're telling the citizens, no, they can't put a sign there. I think we might need to, is that correct?
If I could, it sounds to me like where the road, where the road is next to town property, that we don't.
Like right here.
Yes, that citizens, that this would prohibit signs being placed in front of the town hall, which may or may not be endorsed or supported by the town.
Well, that's okay. I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody looks at political signs on a street corner and says, oh, the DOT endorses so-and-so. I mean, I don't think that's.
Or at the park, or, I think, I, I think that's enough, if I'm interpreting it right.
It's generally.
Yeah, the planning committee, if I can speak, discussed clutter along sometimes the town properties, as well as, yeah, we don't want to endorse a product or a candidate that, it must be perceived as that. You could have one theoretically, right beside the town hall sign.
Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, maybe we try to avoid that kind of implied endorsement as well.
So, so clutter, so that's a good point. I think we all don't like how that looks, but did we consider, did you guys consider in committee, maybe tightening that up a little bit to allow, because, because like right now, you can drive around town and there's not a whole lot of sign clutter on the street corners, right? But I'm envisioning next November, when we have a town election, there, there might be, have you guys thought about, I'm sure you did discuss tightening it up and saying, okay, so for this month or two months, we'll allow signs, and then other than that, like, no signs?
We started talking about all town right-of-ways at first, so we actually drew back from that. So, we thought, that, one discussion was, let's give all signs, like, call them peakway, the whole thing, but that was, we thought was too, the tightening was just along town property. Because that's really what the endorsement.
Would, would one example be if there were five, we buy ugly houses signs right in front of our entrance here? Would that be an example of one of these signs that we would now be able to officially pull up and put away?
Yes, so there are.
As part of compliance?
Currently, yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's the short answer.
So, there are other kinds of signs besides legit signs?
Yeah, I get that.
But, you know, there's, there's these things they call bandit signs, if you, for me with marketing type, right? The idea of a bandit sign. They call it that because you sneak out at 3:00 in the morning, and you stick it up where people drive past it and see it, but nobody can stop to actually pull it up. So, it stays there for about three or four days, and you consider it disposable. You don't really care when it disappears. You just go do it again.
Have we had much of a problem with that?
Uh, it happens.
Well, have we had much of a, I just, I'm not aware of that being like a habitual problem around town, but.
Well, I think part of the challenge is, if we don't have an ordinance that specifically says something about it, then we have a difficulty enforcing it.
I respect that, but I don't know. It's kind of like the smoking in parks thing, like, it's not a problem. Why have we got to make a law about smoking in parks? Like, I just think it's, it's just overkill, I just.
I specifically asked about, you know, early voting time, because there, there tends to be a lot of signs up in, in early voting, and with this, if this passes, my understanding is that early voting signs are still allowed, but just in a designated area, which the Board of Elections should designate. So, that doesn't mean they're going to be banned, it just means they're not going to be right along the roadway, in front of the town hall, and in front of the chamber, and parks, and things like that.
What's the sign, aren't we, when we start running for office, is it like 30 days before election, you're allowed to put signs out or something? Is that the, isn't that the?
It's 45.
Forty-five.
It depends on if it's on state property or, like, DOT area versus.
You put in your, on your house.
Right, private property, you can put it up anytime.
You can put it up whenever.
Anytime.
But the, this ordinance is specifically talking about right-of-way, right?
And town-owned property.
Town-owned, town-owned, right-of-way, abutting town-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's, it's a town street in front of a town facility. And one of the challenges, the, part of the reason I'm not opposing this is, I can see where there are, there have been times where people put a sign up in front of somebody's private property without the permission of the property owner, and even, even if it's in the street, that profit, property owner has the right to say, you should have asked permission before you put it there in the ditch that I mow, right? Or sidewalk that I keep clean of snow. And we have a hard time as a town doing that if we don't have an ordinance. Then people take advantage of the fact that we're not going to do anything about it, so they do put them up, they can put them up. Skate park is another place where it could become a problem. You know, somebody who wants to sell legally, sell, I don't know, e-cigarette paraphernalia out of the back of their trunk, you know, if there's a legal way to do that, they could certainly put out a bunch of signs and target, you know, our park, or, or another park, right? So, we, thing is, just trying to make sure this doesn't turn into a problem, because people do go crazy with signs, and I've, I've pulled up my share of signs that were, I know were installed illegally somewhere, and I won't go into details, but where I knew the owner, or I knew somebody didn't want that sign there, and, you know, they said, yeah, please, please feel free to pull that up. Please feel free to pull that up. I mean, you know, so I'm just, I'm sensitive to that, because, and, and from a town perspective, if we don't have a way to, to enforce it, it can be a problem.
Yeah.
I think we would be taken advantage of by somebody who knew that we might not be able to enforce.
It's all signs, it's not.
Yeah, it's all signs. It's not political.
It's all signs, so we want to treat it equitably.
Yeah. I, I get where you're coming from. I get where you're coming from. What's, define the problem.
I don't, yeah, I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't privy to the committee, I didn't, I didn't make it and.
Well, I wasn't there either, but I'm just feeling.
You're both invited.
Yeah, thanks, we know. Thanks. It is a committee, though.
I don't know, I kind of feel like that one should be tightened up a little bit. I kind of feel like that one should be tightened up a little bit, put some more.
What are your suggestions, Mr. Moore?
I, I think just the things that we just talked about. I mean, the, it's not an issue right now, so we don't need to just make a rule like we did with the smoking thing, just because of whatever. Let's, let's tighten it up and say, if we're worried about these, these bandit signs, as you call them, then let's, let's explore ways or opportunities that we can maybe not have bandit signs lining our property everywhere. Because I, I get it, the clutter doesn't look nice, but, but to restrict the citizens of Apex potentially, who live here and are running a business or, or doing whatever, from putting signs on essentially their land that, that they own through their town government, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with just a flat-out ban of it all.
I think that was the problem, though, with the Supreme Court case, is that it either had to be all or nothing. There was no in-between, and that, that was.
Yes, that's exactly right. It's become very difficult to write sign-related standards that will pass the test of the latest Supreme Court decision. And with temporary signs, it is, like Ms. Kilingsworth said, it's pretty much, in short, an all-or-nothing. And so, that's why it's written to prohibit all temporary signs in these locations, with the exception of banners that hang above the street that are otherwise permitted by the sign section, which is very few opportunities.
I think tightening with Councilier would be just to make a big list, which I'm not sure is appealing, of town and properties that we do want then banned, this, you know, and not be as, not be as encompassing as this, but I think the committee approved, or committee endorsed this unanimously, but.
Yeah, we, we did pick it down a bit from where we started.
Yeah.
And we even talked about holding political signs to 250 throughout the town, but we dropped that also. I mean, so I, I think we pared it down to something reasonable that fits with the requirements of the Supreme Court ruling.
Yeah, I, I support this. I'm, I, I don't want to overly restrict, but it's one thing to say, hey, I'm a citizen of the town, and that's a part that I helped pay for and continue to pay for with my taxes, so I have a right to have access to that part. I think that's a different statement than to say, hey, I run a little business, and since I'm a citizen of this town, I get to put a, one of my signs in front, or five of my signs in front of the Public Works Building of Apex, because I'm a citizen of Apex. And I think that becomes problematic real fast, and I'm, I'm concerned that it, we would be taken advantage of by the worst of the worst, the people who would see it as a loophole, identify it as a loophole, communicate to their marketing team that I found a loophole, and they would take advantage of it pretty quickly. And then we would find ourselves scratching our head with how do we enforce that legally? And that concerns me, because I'm not okay with we buy ugly houses being put in front of our Public Works Building. Every time we, you know, try to remove it, it gets right back up. You know, we got to find somebody, you know, somebody to make them stop.
I agree with that, I agree.
I don't mean to pick on that one, but that's just the one that drives me crazy most.
There, there are reasons why it should drive you crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, do you have anything further to add? You had the floor. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Move on to number two.
Yes, please.
Okay. The next set of amendments are basically to the site plan section of the UDO in order to require that all town development projects be reviewed as either exempt site plans or minor site plans as specified in the UDO. And the amendments also require that all town projects shall meet the UDO to the maximum, maximum extent reasonable and practicable. So, there are two separate, I think, changes here, so I'll talk about them separately. So, currently, we have standards for major site plans in the UDO that have to be approved by town council. However, if it's a town-sponsored project, then you would essentially be acting as applicant and judge on the same projects. There's a conflict there. So, the proposal is to change the language, that all town development projects that are not exempt projects, such as utility projects, shall be reviewed as minor site plans, and we've proposed a definition. A town of Apex development project is, is defined as a development project performed or funded in part or in whole by the town with or without the use of either federal or state funds. And so, then the corresponding change in the major site plan section says all town of Apex development projects meeting the thresholds of this section shall be reviewed as a minor site plan. So, that takes care of the major site plans for town projects being reviewed as minor site plans. Those are approved by staff, as long as generally the standards of the UDO are met, which leads me to my next change, for the proposed change. And these are in the standards for minor site plans. That basically says, in order to approve a minor site plan, the planning director shall find that the standards listed below, which are essentially the requirements of the UDO, are met. And then the proposed language is not withstanding anything to the contrary in the subsection, town of Apex development projects shall meet such standards only to the maximum extent reasonable and practicable, as determined by the planning director. And this gives town projects flexibility when necessary, when it's in the public interest of the town citizens, to have some flexibility in the design standards to make a town development project work on a site that may not otherwise work as well, or be as, it could, could be a cost savings to the town.
So, a different set of rules for the town than citizens?
It's not a different set of rules, but it grants the town the ability to have some flexibility when it's in the best interest of the citizens, such as saving money. There are some instances where meeting the letter, the dotting the i and crossing the t of every single standard in the UDO could result in an increase of cost to the project that might either make it prohibitive or otherwise, you know, to the, to the town. It is the intent, though, that the standards of the ordinance are met, and that they are met to the maximum extent reasonable and practicable, with that determination being made by the planning director. So, it's not up to the town necessarily as the applicant, but it's up to the planning director reviewing all the context of the situation, all of the standards in the UDO, if there is any flexibility warranted or needed for that particular project.
I don't like that one at all. Different set of rules for the town than developers. I don't like that one at all.
We discussed that in the planning committee, and it was, you know, we, the idea was, do we want to hamstring ourselves, you know, sometimes? Or do we, you know, do we want, he was closely as we can to it, to the UDO, but there's, there needs to be something that's slight variance. Do we allow ourselves that?
Yeah.
If I'm summarizing that correctly.
And I, if I recall correctly, if we don't look at this this way, then we're going to be doing quasi-judicial, or is this the same?
Well, there's two separate components to these amendments, the.
That's right, you already said that.
Yes. So, this, this amendment here does not affect the quasi-judicial change.
Yeah, I agree with your part A, I think that's important, but I don't think we should have a different set of development rules for the town government than we do for people that bring projects in here. I think we should all operate by the same set of rules. We're talking about sidewalks, solar, all this other stuff that we're adding costs to developers, and if we need extra property to be a certain distance of a building off of the property line, then we need to do that, because that's, that's our obligation to, to develop by our UDO. I just.
So, rather than totally, it, it's ending ourselves completely like some municipalities do, we, that's why we added the thing about the maximum extent reasonable and practicable, to try to make sure we're, if it is something, as close as possible, if it's not exactly meeting it. That was a discussion we had.
Yeah.
Well, maybe an example would help, but, so, Mr. Moore, if we were going to end up spending more money, then you would still say, stick to what we're supposed to do and spend more money? Or would that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we got to, we got to abide by our rules, right? Or if you have a budget on something, you got to cut someplace else to make up for that, right? I mean, it's just like our household budgets, if we want this, we might have to sacrifice on this, you know, to get that, so, I don't know.
There was an example in the meeting earlier.
Yeah, if, yeah, give us an example, then, of.
Police, the police parking, I think, right, or is that secret?
Can someone come with an example, though, where we would, if we stuck to our own rules, where we would possibly be spending more money of the citizens, and then doing, doing a variance would then save money, then maybe it would allay Mr. Moore's concerns?
Well, just off the top of my head, I can think of situations where to require the strict compliance with the rule or the standard may be that our alternatives are either not doing the project, or having to condemn property because the neighboring property owner doesn't want to sell, to get you that distance that you need for the building, that type of situation. So, you'd be good in that.
Or, I guess maybe another perspective is, I'm trying to do an addition on the side of my house, and I have a setback off the road that I have to abide by it. I mean, there's no if, ands, or buts, I got to be a certain distance off the, off the road for that. Like, I, I just, I don't know if I agree with us operating by a different set of rules that we ask everybody else to operate by. Adjust the project, make it work in the boundary that you have to make it work in, and in the budget you have it make it work in. I don't, maybe I'm.
If the language included some of what you're talking, speaking about, if it mentioned things like, you know, financially, you know, reasonable, those kind of things, or fiscally responsible, or whatever, if that language was added in there, would that allay your concern?
How about, I don't know, I thought a little bit about this, you know, we all meet with developers that are bringing projects in, right?
No, we all don't.
Okay, that's a great point. Maybe we should, right, to get what we want out of projects, if you spend time talking with developers and say, hey, this is what I would really like to see in your project. like to see in your project. Same thing with us, if we're doing a project, if we accept part A of this, we're not the judge and the applicant and the jury and all that stuff, right? So, maybe we can talk with staff who's putting these plans together to fit within the UDO or to see some of these other things that we desire to see. I don't know, I mean, I just, I don't like the different set of rules. I think we need to all operate by the same set of rules. That, yeah.
If I may offer one other perspective, for PUDs, for example, that we see, oftentimes there's flexibility desired by the developer, because what they want to do may not fit, may not work, and so they develop a set of standards that have some relief from the UDO, such as the last rezoning that requested a buffer reduction. But in exchange, there are other things offered as part of that development. We see architectural standards as things over and above what the UDO allows. I don't think the town necessarily wants to be submitting rezonings for PUDs to simply gain a bit of relief, which for the projects that I've worked on, it's almost always, I mean, it usually is not an issue. There's not this point of negotiation where you've really got to have a hard time figuring out how to make something work.
So, you're saying we couldn't go to that?
Well, we could, but then you would be applicant and jury again. So, which, I mean, the town submits rezonings for itself, but usually they're for parks or for street rezonings, very rarely for conditional zoning. So, it's just a, there is maybe a different perspective to offer on that.
We're not advocating going to the extreme that some other cities and towns do, which is, we're not holding ourselves to the UDO at all. We're just going to do our own thing. We're saying, we're going to, to the extent possible, we're going to stick to the UDO, and then we're going to tell you, this is where we had to deviate from it. Because now, if we get rid of the quasi-judicial aspect of reviewing these things, we can actually talk to you about them, and we can say, this is what we've deviated on. And if the council says, yeah, we're not comfortable with that, figure out how to do it another way, we could bring you alternatives and the costs for those alternatives, you know, and what the impact on the project that the citizens have asked for, yes.
So, if I understand you right, if there is any deviation on something, that it will be, the council will be informed?
I mean, you're the owner and the applicant for the site plan, so yes, you will have the --
Opportunity to weigh in.
The UDO does not say that, but as the one staff member that works for you, I'm going to be telling my bosses what it is that we're doing in your application that deviates from your law.
Okay. The thing that I always want to make sure is, because this is as determined by the planning director, but then it does come to council to take a look at.
These will be staff approvals. It will not get approved, I will tell you, will not get approved until you have notice of what we're deviating from, and you have a chance to say, timeout, stop, don't approve it.
And that deviation could happen in the middle of the process, we could talk about it, too, not necessarily the end.
We could run up against something during the design of a project that, and we just need to say, stop, come into the council and say, this is what we need to do. We need to deviate here, and you can say, nah, don't do that. Or you can say, okay, we're all right with that.
Any other comments?
That's the last amendment.
That is?
Yes, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously at their meeting last week.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and no one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter to council for discussion leading to a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion. I assume someone from the committee will say it.
That's what I was waiting on.
You can.
You can.
That's what you do.
That's what you do, yeah, that's right. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion?
You know, I had definite concerns about this going in, but after discussion with staff and understanding a little bit more about it, I don't have a problem with this. I feel like it's a better process.
Okay. Anything further?
The argument I would talk about with political signs, back to that one, is that, I know we kind of drove it in the ground, but it's 45 days, I think, before the election, but I think it feels a lot longer to some people, including myself, because it's so many signs out there, and so decluttering a little bit of space we can was one of the appealing aspects of making that change, in my opinion.
All right.
So, yeah, I appreciate more of the conversation, the explanation related to this. I don't know whether the language, you could just be a little more specific, then maybe for transparency purposes, maybe the public would understand it a little bit better. They may have some of the questions that Mr. Moyer had, so I'm not going to think of what it could be right now, but it could be about, you know, just something a little more weedy, I guess.
All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
All right, we have, that passes 4-1. And I know staff heard all of that conversation about these items, but I do think it would be advisable just to maybe toss out the thought, I don't believe we want to be in a place where we have our set of rules that are different from the developers. I don't think we want to be there conceptually. So, I think as we monitor this, you know, if we ask somebody, pave that parking lot or else you can't put a building there, we're going to try to pave our parking lots and not go gravel. We've already had that conversation once a few years ago, and I think that's our intent, is to stick to all the rules. So, with that said, I'll ask, directing this to the town manager, as you find any of these opportunities, we ask as council, make it painfully clear to us where we are asking to deviate.
That was the commitment that I made to you.
Yep, yep, and I know you did. So, I'm just reiterating it for everyone in the room, right? So --
And we always codify that, some kind of transparency thing, too.
Sure.
If there's processes.
And I think, well, and before, because I'm not quite done.
Sorry.
That's right. But, and the last thing is, we always have the opportunity to go back and reword this. So, if at some point, a real example comes in front of us, and we look at it and go, wait a second, we're not going to put that piece of sidewalk there, because it saves us, you know, $48,000 or whatever, but we should, because that's what we would ask a developer to do, maybe that's when we look at it and go, okay, maybe the wording wasn't strong enough. I'm just using it as a little bit of an extreme example, but I think we would always have the ability to go back and ask staff, or planning committee could talk to staff about, hey, can we tweak the words some more to make it, you know, now that we've got a concrete example in front of us? I think we always have the opportunity to go back to that. Agreed?
I agree. And if it happens a lot, then I think we are going to come back anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that is a problem.
Yep. All right. Yes, so at this time, we've concluded public hearings. We have two new business items to go, and then we'll be done. So, at the request of a council member, we will take a very brief recess, and then we will reconvene very shortly, like three or four minutes.